Like to call to order the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners workshop meeting for Wednesday, February 5th, 2025. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Of course, America.
Next week, we will have the approval of minutes listed here, January 22nd, January 29th, January 29th, 2025 workshop legislative and salary board meetings. Are there any questions of my colleagues on those meeting minutes? All right. Appointment of Chief Clerk Eric Haggerty. The oath of office will be administered by the Honorable Judge Morris. Welcome up Judge. Morning Judge. I'm gonna turn my mic around so people can hear.
All right, are you ready to take your oath of office?
I am.
All right, please raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye, Eric Haggerty.
You saw when we swear.
Do saw, swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
Obey.
Okay.
And defend.
And.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common.
And the Constitution of this common.
And that I will discharge my duties.
That I will discharge my duties.
As Chief Clerk.
As Chief Clerk.
With fidelity.
Fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now move on to executive sessions held between meetings.
Good morning. On February 4th, the Commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding consideration on the lease of real property, RFP processes, board appointment procedures, contract review, tax assessment, and personnel matters.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty?
No, I don't have any questions of him. I just want to follow up what I had said last week and his board pretty much mentioned, but we can do it today as he's officially sworn in. Welcome aboard on behalf of the board and the residents. Mr. Haggerty brings forth a breadth of experience as the former Chief of Staff to the PADCED, the Department of Economic Development overseeing 300 employees and $5 billion in the department. Also is the Chief Deputy for the former Governor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Tom Wolfe. And he also served as the Secretary of Education for Pennsylvania Department of Education. So thank you and look forward to working with you.
Obviously, I echo those accolades and hearing no further questions of Mr. Haggerty, we'll now open it up for public participation on agenda items only. This is three minute participation and just a reminder that the meeting is being live streamed. Is there anyone for public participation? Seeing none, we'll move on to a presentation. Susquehanna Area Mountain Bike Association, Glenn Rowe and Mike Kuhn, I believe are here. Come on up. It's all good. You can. You can grab a seat at the podium there, at the desk there and make sure those mics are on. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
I think we're, are we on?
You're on.
Yep.
Great. I'm Glenn Rowe. I am a board for the area mountain bike association. Mike Kuhn is also. Our organization for various.
Other?
Thank you. I'm really promoting mountain biking. Also with Chris Kelly, our president.
Good morning.
Susquehanna Mountain Bike Association. So we're kind of, it seems like the treadmill, the EVs, they do have one that shows adrenaline for showing now. I think that's what people's perseverance is downhill, crazy, jumping, 20 feet in the air. Obviously, I'm a mountain biker. You can't see me. My.
I could see you doing that.
I keep, I keep two wheels on the ground. For, for a very diverse state. The community we have, you'll hear have youth that are very involved. People of younger age, older age. In fact, we. So it's not. So a little bit about our tour. Bring you up to speed on our organizations and some of the things that are at, here of county. So. Very amount like this. I vote. We have over 250. And a pretty strong social following on our Facebook. We build, maintain 10 trails.
Okay. Right. Oh yeah, there we go. Yeah. We, we built and we built and maintained 10 trails. And three of them are right here in Dolphin County totaling 68 miles of single track trails. We're a chapter of the International Mountain Bike Association, which means that we build to certain standards to make them sure that the trails are sustainable, reduce maintenance. And make them environmentally friendly too. And when we build our trails, they're actually shared use trails. If you go up to any of our trails, you'll see people mountain biking, but you'll see them also hiking, taking their dogs for a walk, taking their families for a walk, running, meditating, just it provides additional access to the outdoors. And in fact, we did a trail study for the trails behind the Hershey Med Center and about 50% of people who use it are not mountain bikers, but people who are doing other activities on the trails. So here is all of our trails that we maintain and I highlighted the three that are right here in Dolphin County. The Hershey Med Center Trail, Ratling Creek, which is in northern Dolphin County, and then Parkway Trail System, which is right here in the city of Harrisburg. These trails. And all these trails, we've developed an incredible relationship with the trip, with the property owners. And they've been gracious enough to allow us to build these trails on their properties. To do that, many times we have to provide insurance. So we ensure ourselves as well as the property owners. So like for Hershey Med Center, we have a $2 million identification insurance coverage for us in the Med Center. And some of the other ones, but you can see it's also a pretty unique group of property owners. We have Boy Scouts of America. We have City of Harrisburg. We have Mechanics for School District. We have DCNR. We do state parks and also State Forest. So we've been blessed that we've had great property owners that allow us to build these trails. So Dolphin County is really very unique and the resources that it provides for mountain biking. Ratling Creek, which is in northern Dolphin County, is an, an epic trail. And what that means is it's the International Mountain Bike Association has designated 53 trail systems around the world as unique rural riding experiences. And there's one right here in Dolphin County. So people come from all over to ride that trail. That is maintained strictly by volunteers. We also have the Hershey Med Center Trail where we conducted an economic impact study for it. And it pulls over $500,000 a year in for people who come there and ride. So when people go for a bike ride, they just don't go to the ride and typically leave. They'll go grab something to eat. They are a drink or they also visit the bike shops and buy, buy bike equipment. And it was logged over 22,000 visits a year go to that, that trail system. And you're going to hear a little bit about the state championships, which Mike is going to talk about. And then the other really unique. Trail system is right here in, in Harrisburg where it is an urban trail system built off of the green belt. So it gives access to kids in the inner city. But I know people who also travel it and, and ride it because it is a very unique trail system. So with that. I'll turn it over to Mike to give you an overview of Pickle.
Thanks Glenn. Mike Kuhn, I am lucky enough to get up every day and think about how I do my work to get more kids on bikes and on trails all across the state. In the Pennsylvania Interscholastic Cycling League. So we work with sixth through 12th graders. We have about 1,350 students and about 800 coaches in the organization today. We're about 10 years old. We're celebrating our, our 10th season and we're one of about 30 leagues across the country in the National Interscholastic Cycling Association. And what that looks like for us is that we put on some really cool events and we, there's some of them are racing, some of them are adventure riding. There's a, there's a specific program that's aimed at bringing more female participants called the Girls Riding Together Program. There's an aspect of it called the Teen Trail Corps as well, where we get our kids out on trails and we engage them in trail stewardship. To put it simply, we feel like if you're a mountain biker, if you ride, you rake. So you put back in to the trail systems to help maintain them and to help create opportunities for more people. Because why are trails important? It's not just about getting out and riding on them. They create a quality of life improvement for everyone in a community. And trails are really often the most heavily used recreational assets that we have. So we're excited to be part of that. We have a number of teams here in the mid-state. And we are always looking for opportunities to, to bring more schools up online. But in particular, we're excited to be working with, with Samba, with the Hershey Med Center on bringing a state championships here to the Hershey Med Center Trails this fall. We'll have about 800 to 1,000 student athletes participating. We'll expect about 2,500 coaches, parents, volunteers, various hangers-on to come out and support the event too. It is, it, it's been a wonderful process to work with HMC to bring us together. We've been working with them for over a year already on it. And it will take place the second weekend in October with a rain date the following weekend as well. So we're looking forward to that. We bring, as we bring events into communities, we, we see a pretty nice return on that as well and we're, we're excited to do that too. And. And I think when we, you know, as we look, so as we, as we look here in Harrisburg, we do not have a, a team yet in Harrisburg. We have some participants from, you know, central Dolphin, lower Dolphin. We don't have sort of the northern Dolphin area covered yet. So we are working towards that and I hope at some point we'll be able to say that we have teams in all these places too. Because when we have such wonderful trail systems, it's the opportunity to, to bring them around. So I think that's what I have for you today.
So just, just in closing, you know, there's a lot of benefits to mountain biking, certainly from the, from the, the health, healthy community part. Just like for myself, I just get out a ride. It's for the cardio part of it. The other part is, you know, there's a real potential to bring an economic boom to, to northern Dolphin County. And it's probably in the area of the county that could, could use a little bit of economic boost. But there's, there's trail systems across the country that have successfully. Taken off, drawn people from, from around the, the country and world to come there and ride bikes. What it has, the potential for northern Dolphin County is restaurants, people staying overnight. And just Williamstown, the other communities up there, they could really see the economic boost from it. And you know, well Parks and Recs, they do a great job. We're supplementing, you know, that Parks and Rec activity with 100% volunteers. We have a budget of, of over $30,000 a year that we spend on insurance and an equipment and, and maintaining trails. When, when trees fall down and storms were out there, we're, we're cutting the trees so that the trails are open. We are stewards of the land in many ways. I can tell you behind the Med Center, there is a big issue of poaching deer, but since we put the trails there, there is no more poaching. Because there's all this activity up there. So really our organizations have a lot that we are doing right now for the county and that the potential in the future. So really, our organizations have a lot that we are doing right now for the county and that the potential in the future. And I feel grateful that we have communications with Anthea on, you know, potential trail systems to expand to. Well, thank you guys very much for bringing that presentation. My colleagues, any questions or comments?
Well, thank you for mentioning Anthea. This board is fully supportive of the great work that she and her team continue to do. The amount of programs that they host each year is pretty remarkable through our park system. And look forward to the, the event coming up in October. Glad you partnered with Hershey Medical Center. I've heard those trails are pretty amazing as well. And it's an opportunity for economic development for the county too. We're going to have thirty-five hundred individuals coming here. I think you mentioned up to eight hundred to a thousand riders and another twenty-five hundred ancillary folks, coaches and parents and stuff. And they'll be staying here during the shoulder season here in Dolphin County, specifically down in the Hershey area of the hotels in Hershey and Sweter Township. I'm sure it'll be very pleased as well as the restaurants and the businesses, because when folks come into town, just like they are right now for the Great American Outdoor Show, which is the largest outdoor show in the world. Eighty million dollars in revenue, eight thousand jobs during the week and two point six million in taxes. On a smaller scale, you're going to be bringing that into the Hershey area. So we greatly appreciate that you're doing it and, and keep at it. I know you've been working on a, a trail or a new set of trails in the northern end and Anthea doing it, working together on that. So keep up the great work.
For sure. It just, uh, thank you for providing the information and obviously being a great steward of the land and thinking of Dolphin County as it relates to larger scale events that can help with tourism. My question is, is there something that you're asking from the county? Is this strictly for informational purposes or are you asking, you know, for tourism support or other levels of engagement? Or is this just strictly for an informational discussion?
Pretty much informational.
Okay.
But obviously we are looking to work very closely with the county to be able to expand our abilities to provide trail systems. So, um, yeah, that's.
And obviously Anthea, hopefully our relationship and, and working with them and coordinating that those will realize other opportunities. But I, again, just didn't know if this was for informational purposes or there will be proceeding with a, another request related to the upcoming state championship event that you're having.
For sure, I have a meeting next week with Greg Cook. So we'll be sitting down with the sports.
Authority, so there may be a future tourist request, okay?
Yeah, yeah, there, there could be.
Great. Thank you for the information and the great work you're doing. And I would agree that both northern dolphin and throughout the county, from a tourism perspective, strategically, as we think about these opportunities, God bless you. I, I think if we're planful, we can really target some of those opportunities in a way that can really be both strategic and thoughtful to areas that are both anxious for and need that kind of investment. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for everything you, you're both doing in the community here in Dolphin County, but also beyond Dolphin County. That seems really amazing. I grew up with a dad who's an avid cyclist, road and mountain. And so I spent many times, many times on mountain biking trails. I was actually on my collegiate cycling. So I've, I've been around a bike quite a bit, more, more road than, than mountain, but I, I love mountain. Not, I don't like going off two wheels though. I agree with you on that. But, but with that, uh, these are some trails I definitely want to take my mountain bike out and go, you go check out. I know the Hershey Med Trails, those are, those are great, those are great trails, but the, the rattling creek, I definitely want to check that out and, and, you know, get out on that. So, um, thank you for bringing this, you know, one of the, one of the goals, uh, I think we want to have as a board is to spotlight, uh, good work happening in the county and using these workshop meetings, which tend to be shorter meetings, to give an opportunity for people who are doing amazing work to come bring that information and share with the community resources that they might not even know they have right in their backyard. And so really thankful for you bringing information about these trails that the community who might be watching this online or might be in the room right now, come aware of. They share word of mouth and it continues to hopefully just inform people of the great resources that exist right here in Dolphin County and the great people doing that work. So thank you for all your work and all the leadership through your organizations that you're amassing all these volunteers to keep these trails up and to encourage people to get out and be active. So thank you.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
All right, next on our agenda, uh, human resources, Ms. Weed.
Good morning. Morning.
For the personnel packet, I'd like to request a vote on items fifteen, nineteen and twenty.
I'll make a motion. I'll second. Any discussion? These are all prison items, correct?
Correct.
All right, hearing no discussion, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right, that's it. Thank you. Next up, Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Hagerty. Oh, sorry, sorry, I apologize. Budget and finance, Mr. Davis. Wasn't trying to speak to you, Mr. Davis, my apologies.
No, this might be the most exciting part of your meeting.
For me it is.
I have no changes to the purchase order packet that was sent out yesterday. It'll be ready for your vote and approval next week. So there's any questions?
Any questions?
No questions for me.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. All right, now Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning. Thank you again, commissioners, for the opportunity to serve in this position. It's an honor to be here with you all. And I'd also like to thank Judge Morris for making himself available to administer the oath of office this morning. Really briefly, I, I just want to thank a few people. Over the last couple of days, I've, I've been on boarded. It's been an extremely smooth process, and I know oftentimes people only hear about things when something goes wrong. So I wanted to make sure I had the chance to thank Jason Norris, Rob Morgan and Darla Mathis from HR, as well as Bob Evans and Al Berico Leo from IT, who've just been tremendous over the last couple of days in helping me get up to speed here. As well as Jessica Spandler and Finn's Peace in the executive offices here. Cannot thank them enough for tremendous support and encouragement over the last couple of days, as well as everyone else here on the fourth floor. Everyone has been wonderful and welcoming, and I'm really looking forward to, looking forward to getting to know everyone and working together. A couple of next steps, we'll be scheduling a group meeting in the next week or so with all department heads. And I'll also be getting together with department heads for one-on-one meetings as well as with executive staff. Again, really looking forward to getting to know everyone and working with everyone here at the county and I'm honored to be here. Couple other updates. Wanted to make sure you are aware that the State Department of Agriculture is monitoring a situation in Lower Sweter Township that may or may not be avian flu related. They've indicated to us that they have no unmet needs at this time, but we will keep you posted if and when that changes. And additionally, National Weather Service has issued a winter weather advisory for this evening into early morning, calling for one to two inches of snow here in central PA and some rapid freezing and ice. We do not anticipate any impact to our operations, but of course want to make sure everyone travels to work safely tomorrow morning, given the potential for snow and ice accumulation. That's my report for today unless there are any questions.
Done for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Solicitor's Report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. There is one matter on the agenda for board action that has been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office. I would add that you should include when you call this the language inclusive of the proposed addendum. My office sent an addendum, which the vendor has not responded and has actually indicated that they'll need more time to respond to our addendum. So if you're going to vote, you want to vote inclusive of the addendum.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Owens? Hearing none. Training packet. Do we have items on the training packet, I believe?
Yeah, there's one, three and four.
Yeah.
Okay. Two is on April 18th, and I don't think requires any action today.
I'll make a motion for approval of items one, three and four as noted training package.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to matters requiring board action. The item, we'll call it agreement between Dolphin County and One Plus Strategies for government relation lobbying services inclusive of the proposed addendum.
I will make a motion for approval of that matter requiring board action.
I will second. Any discussion?
Yes. I know that we made a commitment to RFPing professional services, which I think is a really good move. I've been a proponent and look forward to both the schedule and the opportunities to be able to participate and I look forward to keeping pencils sharp and finding new partners that are for good government here at Dolphin County. I, however, in this bid process, I know we have one bid that is substantially lower than the others. I believe this significant cost savings, as well as the institutional knowledge that has been presented by this specific candidate is, is important to note as, you know, I, I also, while we don't have to choose the lowest bidder, in professional services where we're not required to, and there were several, several bidders that were lower, one substantially lower. I've not really heard the rationale as to why this selection today outweighs the cost savings or the institutional knowledge or the perspective of, of the success related to that, that history. So I just wanted to note for the record, the reasons why I will be voting no in this proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick. I want to start by saying to the residents of Dolphin County that I will continue to conduct myself with a proper decorum that you expect of your elected officials at public meetings. This board needs to govern and I pledge to continue to do so. As my colleagues are aware, recently I've proposed several cost savings measures in this year's approved budget, which will, I believe, total over a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in savings. One of those is an item forthcoming under former business that adds into that. As for the government affairs decision today, I've challenged people to show me here at the county over the past year where the perceived conflicts are in our county government. And I'm not saying folks did anything wrong. I'm saying in areas where there appear to be conflicts, I will support change. One of those areas was with government affairs. Our former firm did great work for us for twenty years, supporting the gaming process and allocation of dollars through the state legislature. That's a fact. Over a hundred and seventy million dollars in gaming grants have been allocated by this board and an additional half a billion in investments and job creation. They also did great work in establishing the process for the hotel tax formula and allocations working on our behalf with the state legislature. That's also a fact. But perceived or real conflicts begin to arise between the Board of Commissioners when managing partners of the firm are also serving. And for the record, as our boards, and since I've served here, I believe unanimous appointments for these individuals over the years. For twenty years as an IDA chairman, our annual allocations of gaming dollars support the operation there. And another partner in the role as chairman of the VHH Tourism Bureau since January twenty twenty-four, where millions of dollars flow through that entity as well. Again, I appreciate their past and hopefully continued service in those areas. So now we have an opportunity to give another firm a chance to service here in Dolphin County in that capacity, free of any other members serving on county-appointed boards where millions of dollars flow through and any potential conflict therein. And I view this as a win-win for the county and an opportunity for a new firm to work with on our behalf after twenty years of the previous firm. And the annual fee being six thousand dollars less per year than we've been paying for the last approximately seventeen.
I, I guess, uh, from a, from a discussion standpoint on this, I, I'd like to add that a, a request for proposal or an RFP is not a bid. By law, a bid must be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. When the county receives proposals in an RFP process, cost is only one factor of accepting and, or rejecting that proposal. The county's decision can be based, it can legally be based on subjective criteria such as background, experience, perceived experience, availability, independence, as my colleague references, and, and other factors. I'll speak for myself. After careful review, I considered multiple proposals from the highlighted lobbying firms. We, we met with them. I greatly appreciate the time and effort that each and every one of them gave through the process. I was personally impressed by multiple of the individuals that we met with, their expertise, their professionalism that they demonstrated during the interviews. Ultimately, I'm, I'm comfortable going with One Plus Strategies. I guess I think they best fit our priorities currently. I'm excited about this new partnership and an opportunity to, you know, put the Dolphin County residents and our needs at the forefront of the state. Obviously, the, the governor just, you know, unveiled his budget proposal. And I think, you know, we need to ensure that we have someone there fighting for the needs of Dolphin County residents in the negotiations for the budget this year and ensuring that we're pulling as many state dollars as we can into the county so that we can care for our residents. And I feel strongly that, um, that this firm will help us in that strategy and that process and advocate for Dolphin County residents. And that's, that's my reason. Is there any more further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Uh, we have some former business here, uh, items one, two and three. Does anything need to be pulled out and voted on separately?
Not for me.
For you?
I think yes, item number three.
You'd like to pull them out on separately? Well, let's, uh, let's, can I get a motion for items one and two prior to a discussion on three?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I just, the point of discussion, I thought you pulled this one last week, Commissioner Priest, this one.
We pulled all three of them last week, and I think you had some questions on it. And I asked, um, other than what's detailed in here, I asked the interim director to come in the case you had any additional questions on those items.
Yeah, the, the question would be if we were not going to do the forty thousand for recycling.
Oh, that's like, that's item, that's item number three.
Yeah, yeah. So, so let, one and two have been substantially addressed and, and motioned. I'm, I'm ready for call for a vote.
Okay. Yep.
Call for voters, one, three?
Aye. 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 Motion carries. All right, on item three, uh, let's get a motion in a second before we open discussion. Is, do we have a motion? All right, let's have a discussion, because it seems like there, we might be pulling against them.
I, I thought this was pulled last week and I, again, I still don't know why it would appear.
I thought it was tabled. That was my understanding. I think all three were tabled, but I do think Commissioner Priest referenced a desire to pull it, but I think it just ended up getting tabled with.
I just think with the, I just think with the cost savings measures that this board is currently looking at and moving forward. I'm great. That this is an area where having a TV commercial for the three commissioners on a topic that's been out there for years and years, I think I am supportive of not putting forth forty thousand dollars for this year for a TV commercial involving three commissioners.
I'll, I'll second that. And my point of discussion is, I don't know why we need to take action if we're just not going to do it.
We have, we have a motion in a second to pull this item. I believe we can pull it entirely. And I think that the idea that being pulled for cost-saving measures makes a lot of sense. Obviously, uh, we need to be looking at our budget and finding creative ways to save money, and this is a great opportunity for that. And, uh, we can certainly reconsider it later in the year if we, if we find that this is something that's essential or that we've reprioritized other monies in our solid waste and recycling for this to be a priority. Is that good? Do we need, do we need, do we need that call and vote to pull something? We just, we have a motion in a second to pull, we can pull.
Can I? It's just a first for me.
May I ask a, just a procedural question? Is there any distinction between voting no, if, if a majority of the board votes no versus pulling?
My understanding is, uh, the board isn't that, that, we could vote no, but I think the, the thing is we're more in this case, not necessarily against it in principle, it's something that's been, that's happened annually. I think it's more a cost-saving measure and wanting to say, maybe we would reconsider later in the year, but for right now, just trying to.
And I, yeah. That, that's fine, I'm just not going to be changing my vote or my stance on that particular topic during the twenty twenty-five year calendar.
From a legal perspective, would it be better to vote no? No. Okay. It, it pulling, it's fine. Okay. Well, we'll just pull it then. We have a first and second pool. We'll move on. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Hartwick.
Yeah, just, um, yeah, let me just step back here for one second. I'd first like to, um, just, um, uh, obviously welcome our new chief clerk. I look forward to, I know we've had several discussions and, and we are trying to gain the ability to develop a sense of rapport. And so far, obviously, communication has. the ability to develop a sense of rapport and so far, obviously, communication has been extraordinarily effective with both the Assistant Chief Clerk and you. So I look forward to that continuing in the best public interest and and excited by the opportunity for. So I just want to make that a public statement. Second one is, I know Commissioner Priest talked about six thousand dollars a month less in proposals. I think he meant six thousand a year, not six thousand a month.
Thank you.
And then also, we talked about savings of substantial savings. We had a fifty four million dollar budget deficit last year. You know, so for us to close that gap, there's been continual discussions about cuts that need to occur. And while every cut is really important, we're talking about, you know, a hundred thousand dollars versus the kind of levels of cuts that need to happen in order to avoid future concerns. And I I hope these sort of suggestions continue because I've not heard them over the course of time and I I I welcome the ability to understand other ways for us to examine these and figure out the best possible way to save future resources and taxpayer dollars. However, again, today, even though you made the comparison over the past, we could have saved at least sixty thousand dollars in this particular proposal. And unfortunately, that was not able to be done based upon the individual that we selected. So again, cost savings, I think it's good to move in that direction. I've been asking to hear about those for a long time. And any substantial ones should be brought to the attention of of the floor and certainly should be considered for for the greater good. But just again, welcome to the to the new chief clerk and thank you for the opportunity to do something new today because I never voted negatively for something that was an affirmative action. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Priest, and just following up on what I said earlier, everyone, please, if you're up, have the opportunity to go to the Pennsylvania Farm Show this week to check out the Great American Outdoor Show. I know both of my colleagues were there Friday. I was there Friday earlier in the day and had an opportunity to take a tour. And just a remarkable event that's taking place there with the hundreds of vendors and and exhibitors and the two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand people anticipated to come during the nine, ten day show and it's pretty remarkable here. The revenue that it generates here in the capital region, as I mentioned earlier, eighty million dollars, eight thousand jobs, two point six million in taxes, our restaurants, our hotels are filled, gas stations are cars coming in and out, filling up. I mean, it's just a really, really good thing here for the local economy and tie that in with the work the folks with the biking industry are doing and there are a lot of good things happening here in central PA. So thank you.
Yeah, certainly. Get out to the Great American Outdoor Show. Yep, that is a that was a good tour that we took. And impressive to see them using every square foot of that space, the farm show.
I had no idea elephants were that big. There's a life sized elephant there, some of those lions and the bison. I mean, good lord.
I want to just reference in my comments, prison town hall. Thanks to everyone who came out last night to the prison town hall or watched it online. We'll continue to provide opportunities for feedback, communication and greater transparency. So thank you for being here for that. I also want to reference that we are in Black History Month and during Black History Month, we honor the profound contributions of Black Americans to our nation's history, culture and progress. It's a time to reflect on the struggles for justice and equality, celebrate the achievements that have shaped our communities and recommit ourselves to fostering inclusion and understanding in all that we do. This year, Dolphin County is proud to sponsor performances at Gambit Theater of Voices of the Eighth, Part Three, Hallowed Ground. This production is the work of local playwright Sharia Ben of San Kofa African American Theater Company. Voices of the Eighth, Part Three, Hallowed Ground is an unforgettable journey through time and spirit where the past and present collide again and the power of community and ancestral wisdom light the path to liberation and hope. Performances begin on February fifteenth and individuals can learn more by going to gammittheater dot org. Great opportunity to support Gambit Theater and that show during this month. So with that said, we will open it up for public participation. Just a reminder, this is a three minute time limit and we are being live streamed. Oh, yeah, sure.
I appreciate it. Just a question from last week's meeting. We had a long discussion about the disclosure of the people that submitted proposals and I guess there was some question about how that would be handled.
Yes.
And I was just curious, did you come to a conclusion on whether that would be made public or not?
Position of the solicitor's offices, that cannot be disclosed until the contract's awarded. The contract was voted on today, so technically it's been awarded. However, there's a pending addendum that the chosen vendor must comply with. So my recommendation would be to not disclose that at this point.
Public participation. Yeah, for those coming up for public participation, go grab a seat at the desk up here.
Fantastic.
Morning. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Lewis Butts. If you don't know, I was born and raised in Harrisburg. Born in Harrisburg Hospital. Played in a river all my life. I'm not scared of the river and I'm an avid bike rider. Okay, okay. I used to ride with the Amish. And kept me in shape. Maybe we should ride sometime. But my point is that the narrative sort of needs to be changed regards to the Harrisburgonian and what Harrisburg represents. To so that we can reach our potential. Right now, we have the farm show. We don't have a slice of the pie as a Harrisburgonian. We don't have twenty of those vendor slots that we can give the people who live in Harrisburg to get some of that top dollar money. We don't have the hotels that we ought to have. We need to refocus in like the seventies when the Harrisburg was bustling so we can compete with Hershey. Last time I was here, you said I was a guy with crazy ideas. Well, maybe sometimes that's what we need to bring ourselves back. Somebody that spews crazy ideas. I had a crazy idea ten years ago about the police academy at McDevitt. York built the got a police academy. Now their crime is down. We have to do things. Just because I'm from Harrisburg, that doesn't mean you should trample tread on me. Maybe you should take a little bit of inventory of what I'm saying because I've been around. I'm indigenous. And that should mean something. Now, when I proposed an aquarium for the old post office, Hershey could compete, could help me out regards to because I'm running for mayor. This is a whole spiel today. Tell the commissioners that I am running for mayor because I have a lot of ideas. There needs to be a change in our administration regards to how we treat each other. We shouldn't berate people. It takes a a person with a godly spirit to change the narrative. That's the type of person that I am. I give people mercy for calling me bad names and still spew out solutions and resolutions. Right here, there's a tri-county study that was done in two thousand and fourteen with the Department of Transportation, which talks about our transportation systems. I'm gonna put air, I'm gonna give this a little light so we can see it's a it's off the railroad bridge. It comes when we need to use some stuff. So we can use a good lobbyist to help come in that bridge, that that organization open up and bend a little bit so we can make our city prouder and better. I'm willing to work with you. I got I'm gonna be willing to work you with you inside and outside. Transparency is the key. Thank you. And God bless you and good job. Just good job, guys. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Butts. Next.
Hi, Dean Stilp from the no TMI restart. Thank you for the three minute opportunity to speak to you. This is a brief statement. I gave a brief statement early in January, but we're limited to three minutes. So I was thinking that it might be better if we could, the anti-nuclear groups in the area, the people opposed to restart could actually meet with you folks for a longer time, a longer discussion, answer your questions about different views that we have that we have on this. So we're focused on the electric rate payers who are affected by this. Almost all of Dolphin County's communities are not served by Dolphin, by Constellation Energy. Yet many of the communities in the evacuation zone, there, excuse me, many of these communities are in the in the evacuation zone. Can we call them captive non-rate payers who are basically under the slaves of the technological tyranny of Constellation Energy? Look at the community electric service map if you really want to see who they are. None of these folks have a choice. Years ago, after the first accident, there was a long bind, there was a non-binding referendum in Dolphin County where voters voted overwhelmingly against the restart. That small message that democracy is not even available anymore. One of the key points I want to make today is that the recent innovations in the way of data centers and utilize energy and use energy and they're making headlines. The recent introduction of deep source has shown that the technical architecture for more efficient energy use can affect data centers and may show the way for better grid reliability because of less energy use. I've attached yesterday's press memo for your review about about deep deep seek and the new energy parameters there. This is something you should realize before you go further down the restart path. Mike, I mean, community precincts especially should be aware of this. Your TV appearances starting restart have been tempered, have to be tempered with some reality. Are you really the advocate for twenty more years of high level nuclear waste on Three Mile Island? Where there is exactly seven tons already exist. You have some kind of solution? Or you'd like to share with the public or are you again without a good solution? Again, like last month, our message is simply this, no TMI restart constantly from we are not Constellation and Microsoft slaves. By where by way you're looking for, you're looking for money for the budget. I wondered if last month I said maybe Constellation would like to write the Dolphin County a check for a hundred million dollars to to participate in Dolphin County's participate here in Dolphin County with the plant. I don't think they've signed that check yet, but maybe you want to go talk to them. Anyhow, we're not going back. We're not going to be under TMI's thumb. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gene.
Any questions?
Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning, Onosai Swatara Township. I I want to start today talking about, so something you guys should know about me is I am the child of Nigerian immigrant. So like half my family are Nigerian immigrants here in Pennsylvania. And I also am the mother of a child who goes to Central Dolphin East High School, which is the most diverse high school in the state of Pennsylvania. And being the most diverse high school in the state of Pennsylvania, my daughter's friends and people that she cares about all come from different backgrounds, many of them from mixed immigration status families. And I have noticed how frightened she is lately by everything going on. And it is also related to the people that she loves and cares about in her life. And so one of the things and two of these commissioners, full disclosure, have heard this last night, but one of them wasn't there. So I just wanted to be very specific about some things that the county can do because there are things that people can do to protect people in our community, our immigrant communities here in Dolphin County. And so I just, I want to ask you guys to really consider all of the ways in which you can protect my my kids, friends, my family members, everyone in our community in this time. So so one of those things is except where required by law, I would like the county to refuse to request individual status. So at any point, just make like, we're not gonna ask people their immigration status because just like having that information collected somewhere is something that can be used against people. Except for where required by law, I don't think the county should condition any services or benefits based on immigration status. They should be applicable to all people here. I think that the county should refuse to detain anyone based on immigration, detainer, administrative warrant or suspicion of immigration status. And I also think that the county could have policy that prevents sharing information with ICE or or Customs and Border Patrol. And I think that would go a long way to allay some of the fears. These are not normal times. Like, I know this is business as usual procedural here. Welcome. So a little different today, but it's very procedural in this room, but outside of this room, it's not. It's very real to a lot of people and it could get even realer very quick if people don't act and make measures. And you guys all have a lot of power that are up here and I'm very hopeful that you will use it for the right things. So thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Mr. Krupp. How you doing?
Matt Krupp, Dolphin County, Prithonits area. I live in the city of Harris. Live in the city of Harrisburg. I am not running for mayor. Welcome aboard, Eric. By the way, I look forward to working with you. Hey, I was came before you a few months ago to present my budget and I just had some really good news that I wanted to share with you. Again, like we didn't have like a full data set going into that. We went live with our electronic filing in April of last year and had to make a bunch of tweaks, did like a slow go live, soft go live throughout the year. So anyway, I got my January numbers year over year. So in January of twenty four, we remitted about seventy five thousand dollars to the county treasurer's office, you know, for the county funds that we had collected. And this year we're at a hundred and five thousand dollars. So, you know, I had initially projected, I think, about six thousand dollars a month in additional revenue. And, you know, past performance doesn't guarantee future results, but I think we're off to a really great start. And I hope that, you know, those numbers continue. I'm going to continue to update you guys throughout the year as more of those numbers come in. Also, I and like while I'm here, I had a question for you. An email went out about some spots being reserved, parking spaces around the county courthouse, I think along the marble wall. And we're removing the loading zone from two of those spaces to the surface parking lot. And I would just ask, you know, like, I think that we have a good bit of customers who come in that, you know, have some type of mobility or disability things. And by moving those spaces for the loading zone to this flat surface parking lot, they now have to navigate a curb or to go around that curb to get access to the handicapped accessible entrance in the back of the courthouse. So just maybe, you know, either reclarify that like, that's not just specifically like a hard toe away zone and give those people like a little bit of a opportunity to to park there, you know, for drop off and pickup.
That's good to know. Can you work with the chief clerk's office and
Sure.
and and kind of clarify that? We might need to make a change to that if it's if it's something that's going to impact people's ability to get into the courthouse.
Matt, if I may ask, you do the naturalization ceremonies.
Oh, folks, really? Good point, Commissioner. Don't mean to cut you off. You guys are all invited April sixteenth. We're looking about fifty new citizens that we're going to naturalize. Room one.
And where do those folks park?
Um, no, they park in they various places.
The reason I'm bringing it up, these are folks that might not understand the process of the parking and how do we?
Sure, it's it's always a challenge. Unfortunately, like our parking garage doesn't have the ability to accommodate fifty people plus their family members. You know, so they're on their own to find, you know, parking throughout the city of Harrisburg. They can park in the Market Square Presbyterian garage or Market Square Garage next to there. That's a public parking. They can park in the meter so they can find them.
And the reason I'm bringing that up, I think in the past, you and I have been aware that some of those individuals might be parking in some spots they shouldn't be. And I hope that we, when we have the naturalization ceremony, that we work with the sheriff and security to in case someone does that, I think it would be a bad start if we towed them their first day as a citizen.
Welcome to America.
Just one other thing to scrub the, I know the view only portion of your service also is coming online.
Oh, yeah.
Could you also enlighten us with the
Yeah, so last year, the measures that we took to, right, the whole the whole purpose of it, right? You guys are talking about, you know, dollars and cents in the bottom line. And, you know, our office, you know, doesn't always operate in the black because we provide services to indigent customers who can't afford to pay their filing fees. So we've been trying to find ways to shift some of that, you know, financial burden from the backs of the Dolphin County taxpayers to to the super users of our like attorneys and law firms of our law office, right? So we've, you know, increased fees in line with our statutory obligation. So we we went through that process last year, had a fee increase. We also implemented electronic filings. We're capturing this convenience fee for those end users so they don't have to come downtown anymore. And that's where most of this revenue comes from, but you got And that's where most of this revenue comes from. But you guys also, there, this board also, I think it was, might have been a different board, but this board approved an additional module that we have left, yet to deploy, which is going to be, uh, allows to charge pay-per-view, you know, to access, uh, uh, to view the dockets online. Um, so that's going to be additional revenues that our office is going to generate. So just stay tuned for that. Thank you for bringing that up. We, we're not live with that yet. We're still working with our vendor to get there, but
That's a good word.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion. Oh, sorry. I didn't, I didn't, you, you caught me right up the left of my just figured you would have talked at your microphone.
So, so last time was a business question. This time my, my fellow officer sort of reminded me that I'm falling down on my job. Uh, I just want to remind, uh, the board and the public watching, um, the tax season has opened in Dolphin County as of February 1st. The tax bills are out. Um, and the reason I raise that is because, uh, a lot of people, um, end up missing the discount period because while you think that they would know the bills come out every February, oftentimes they don't wait till, or they do wait till the end of the year to ask, you know, hey, what's going on? And then they've missed the discount period. So if they pay in February, March, they actually receive the discount. Uh, and I just want to remind the public, uh, that it is open. You can pay your taxes and if you do that in the next two months, uh, it's at a discount. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Very important information. Get the discount. Seeing no one else for public comment, I'll take
You can do it, Jerry.
All right, we're adjourned.